Seeing the hour of six thirty having arrived, I call to order this Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty five, common council meeting to order. Roll call Heather.
Patrick Singer, Greg Meischek.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Brian Shannon.
Here.
Steve Sayoun.
Here.
Orin Smith.
Here.
Neil Hicks.
Here.
All right, if you'll please rise as you are able for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to our agenda, council member can choose to remove an item from the agenda or rearrange order. However, introducing new items to the agenda is not allowed. Any proposed changes require a motion and a second and approval from council. Agenda shall be approved at each meeting, even if no changes are being made.
Let the poll item number thirteen from consent into staff reports.
I'll second that. Yeah, move thirteen down into staff reports on the social media policy. Then is there a motion to approve, or was yours a motion also to approve with that change?
Yeah, I'll approve the agenda with that change.
Okay.
Motion to approve, sorry.
And then I second, and then Chen seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So we have, we're gonna start off then with the last of our housing guest speakers for the spring term with Brian Duanda from Sheboygan County Economic Development. John, is there anything to lead off before that?
No, I would just point out that we had some members of the public that requested Washington County and Sheboygan County, so we arranged for that to happen. And maybe I would point out this will be the last in our speaker series regarding housing. So, thank you.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to talk tonight. I'm happy to address questions as I go through, and if you want to wait until the end, that's fine as well. But my name's Brian Dowden. I'm the executive director of Sheboygan County EDC. I joined the corporation in two thousand and twenty, the fall of two thousand and twenty, and everything you're seeing here is really from when we started our core strategic direction session in November of two thousand and twenty through today, okay? Many of the slides you see are actually the slides I presented to my board during those sessions, so trying to build the ground swell for why we needed to take action and bold action rather than being passive, okay? So if you go to the next slide, to give you a sense of where we're at today, even this slide is old. As of today, we have twenty-nine homes sold, twenty-one first-time home buyers, ten relocations in the county, and twenty-nine employers actually having residence in those houses, okay? So when I start talking about our, the forward fund and the housing initiative, just realize any employer can take advantage of those homes. Any resident can take advantage of, as long as they hit the eligibility criteria, I'll go through that. But the key factor is, is we've had private sector investment come forward as a community good, and it's a very unique model in Sheboygan County that we've been able to put together, but there is no return on investment for those private sector employers specifically, okay? We're building inventory and making sure that we have the ability for them and for all employers to have adequate workforce for long-term growth in our county.
Real quick, quick question for you. You just gave the numbers. Were those numbers for this year? Is that weird?
That's, since the program created, we, our first homes were sold in February of two thousand and twenty-four. So right now, if you go, actually, if you go back one, right now, homes under construction, we have twenty-five homes under construction today. We have thirteen homes ready now for sale as of last month. So we are now going into buying season, so we, our goal will be probably forty to fifty homes by the end of the year will be sold, okay? And our challenge, and this is a slide from the strategic direction session of during the great recession, like many communities, Whitewater, I'm sure is the same case, if you look at your building permits and the track record of building permits, historical over from two thousand and eight to two thousand and nineteen, you lost a lot of single-family homes. People could, builders could not get financing for spec homes. It just shrunk almost immediately. In Sheboygan County, we lost around two hundred homes a year. We lost a lot of small builders, and so we were getting apartments, but we weren't getting the single-family homes. And during our strategic direction meetings, we had CEOs, you know, I should probably tell you about my corporation, nonprofit, public-private partnership, but I have forty board members, four zero. So anybody that's pretty much involved, we have ma, most of the major players involved, so we can build consensus quickly, okay? But we were able to get apartments to be built. However, we had employers saying, we can't recruit talent to apartments. We need kids, need yards, we need that ability. Next slide. Then we looked at the housing market, so we've created a task force and really started working the numbers of how do we get entry-level homes, I call them entry-level homes, rather than workforce or affordable entry-level homes that will be affordable in a budget for somebody working on production plants. Another tidbit about Sheboygan County, thirty-three percent of our employment is production staff. So we are looking at manufacturing floor, we need to be able to hit that price point to make it feasible for these companies to continue to grow and hit the needs of the community. So our challenge, if you look at our housing market, we had nine, ten days of inventory of anything under two hundred and fifty thousand. So from a production staff point, standpoint, two hundred and fifty thousand is a pretty expensive house. Back when I was growing up, that was nice, high-end. In today's market, that's considered low-end in the current housing market. However, we only had ten days of inventory and twenty days at every price point. That, in a normal market, is ninety days of inventory. So our housing market is very tight. Moving there, I went to look at a house, I had, there had three offers within, me accepting the offer by Friday, three offers on the house it was going to. So, and it's the same thing across the state. So we have all those wonderful things on the left-hand side, jobs, cost of living, lifestyle, schools, but we don't have a supply of homes or a supply of apartments. Next. So again, we created this task force of six different CEOs and really started hammering out what do we need to be able to resolve this issue as a community. At the end of the process, one of the final questions was, Brian, what do we need to do a pilot? And the answer was, well, in order to do a pilot, we need to do a subdivision, and we need to start constructing homes and being the developer of record, not relying on, again, we don't want to compete with the private sector, but the private sector can hit the margins and keep their margins and hit the price point that we need for our manufacturing staff. So the SEDC, through generous contributions or investments, these are not charitable contributions, these are investments into a fund to actually construct homes and subdivisions. There is no return on investment, no return on interest, anything of that nature. They are building inventory and making sure that we have a, a supply of homes for future workers.
So what was the source of that eight million dollars?
Two million dollars from each of those companies.
Okay, thank you.
And then we did get, we have an allocation of two million of ARPA, and right now, as of today, we've only used one point two million, and that's on our third subdivision, to acquire the land. And then the last eight hundred thousand, we anticipate buying additional land in two thousand and twenty-six to close out the ARPA contract and only have two transactions, so it's much easier to, to monitor. You'll notice that the first thing it says, affordable housing, childcare, and labor force. This would be an evergreen fund. Our goal is continue to churn today's housing, that's the issue we have to deal with, but in the future, it could be those other challenges that we will allocate resources. Next slide. So this is again a slide from two thousand and twenty-one, and what we were talking about, our goal, six hundred to a thousand single-family homes. We should be around two hundred homes by two thousand and twenty-seven. Price point, homes under two seventy-five, material costs are killing us. I think you can understand that with everything that's going on. So construction cost of homes is, from when we started the process to when we actually entered the market, was a thirty to forty thousand dollar jump, just in material cost. So that target of two seventy-five, we are in the three fifteen range, and we will be getting down, later on, you'll see, we'll be getting down two seventy-five to three hundred thousand range. But we're investing in entry-level home construction, and it's a price point that the private sector alone cannot hit and/or is not, with their limited resources, their, the return on investment is not there for them to accomplish that. So again, we're creating a unique value proposition for our county and for our employers. Next slide. So the fund actually will look at smaller homes. We have never gone eleven hundred. This is an old slide again from two thousand and twenty-one, when I was going around to communities explaining what we were gonna do. Twelve hundred square feet is the smallest home, and we've gone up to sixteen hundred square feet as far as the size of house. Until the second phase of the subdivision, we're building four two-bedroom, two-bath homes, but otherwise, they're all three-bedroom, two-bath homes. And full store, full basements in the lot sizes. In phase one, our first project is sixty feet, and then we are actually in a pocket neighborhood. If you're familiar with that, we'll show you what that is, but those are thirty-five feet and forty-two feet wide. Target price point, and I want to stress, the target price point now is the cost of construction of the actual structure is what you're seeing there, not the end price of home. That's the reality of today's markets when we go out to bid for housing development. The reason why, again, we take all the risk, we get the financing, we do working capital. For the contractors, they have a contract with us guaranteed, they have to deliver on homes, and they have to deliver on price point. So we hold them tightly to their budget, and then we manage that process, and, but we take all the financing risk, all the holding costs, all that is eaten by the SEDC in our project. Next slide. I want to stress that, again, we, there's private sector investors and housing developers, we're trying to hit a price point that is just not expected in the market today. So we are building small lots, fifty and sixty-foot entry, and then the marketplace is typically seventy or larger as far as, and that's how we differentiate and don't have our home builders up in arms about why we're doing what we're doing. To give you an example, though, many of you are familiar with Kohler, Wisconsin, viewed as a pretty nice community living. When we were selling this to my board, as far as why we do it, Kohler lot sizes, fifty feet. So the width of your lots doesn't necessarily make the community better or worse, it's what you do around that community, around that lot, to make sure that it's a viable neighborhood that you're building. So fifty and sixty-foot lots, and you can see the cost estimates that we were doing. Next slide. And again, this is back in twenty-one, and where we thought we needed to be for price points. You'll notice it says one twenty area median income. We ended up going, because the state had passed statutes of under forty percent for a housing fund that, that they were doing, I saw one forty and said, that makes it easier and matches up with the state, so we are actually at one forty for our eligibility. But we do have a net worth requirement of under a half a million, and we, they have to have full-time employment in the county. So we did the legal work on fair housing, for employment, and fair lending to make all this work. Next slide. So our first project in Sheboygan Falls, three different parcels. Parcel one is our first subdivision of fifty-four homes. Parcel two is where we have forty-one homes being constructed, and that's a pocket neighborhood. And lot three, and to the left is another part of lot three, those are actually being sold off to be apartment development, where there'll be forty-eight two-bedroom, two-bath apartments going in at that location. The one thing I would just note to you is, we definitely had a site selection criteria, looking at what community we went to. We went to every community, understanding, here's our specs, what zoning codes do we fit in, all that. On three subdivisions, we've had one person show up to speak against the project, well, one person show up to speak on the project, and that was a realtor asking to represent the project in that community. So if you do your due diligence, make sure your zoning code's aligning with development opportunities and the needs of the entry-level housing market, you will not have pushback, in my view, based on our experience in the last three years. Very definitely, we also wanted to make sure that we were not causing a school referendum immediately, so we wanted to make sure that we were working with communities that had capacity in schools, and we are being a good partner in that community. Next slide. So we did a master plan. You can see every floor plan that we have and where we placed it. We actually did color scheming of every single house, and there was a construction schedule of twenty-four months. For the community, that's guaranteed revenue tax base if this isn't a TIF district, but no TIF dollars are actually being used to build the infrastructure, it's a pay-go structure, but we will be using that to actually underwrite part of phase two, which is the pocket neighborhood, then enhance amenities and try to bring the price points down further.
Do you have an, the two twenty to two fifty price point? Is there an update on that?
That's cost of structure.
Cost of structure, okay.
Yep. Again, and how we structure it is, our bank financing is, we basically put fifty thousand dollars in on every single house, and we have a line of credit to handle the rest, and then we pay cash for the infrastructure. So if you have sites with infrastructure available, you're ahead of the game. So then you can say, okay, who's the home builder that is willing to hit our price point to actually deliver homes on a timeframe and on a budget? Next slide. So our, this is, so since two thousand and twenty-one, that's the area photo that you saw on the last side, here's the subdivision today. We'll have all fifty-four homes built by the end of the year, and God willing, we'll have all fifty-four homes sold by the end of the year. The price point three fifteen to three twenty-five, in the last month, we actually added a realtor onto this. To give you a sense, the first homes in this subdivision appraised at three seventy to four hundred thousand. We're selling, they're gaining almost immediate equity into their house. Next slide. If you, also at the bottom, for people in the audience and council members, again, our homes are all listed on our talent recruitment website, someplacebetter.org slash homes. This is our pocket neighborhood. We started construction in November of homes, and we, you can see the road structure is in there. We put all the infrastructure in September to November, and the block top will go in in the next month. Price point here, two sixty-five to two ninety, and again, we have, in this case, we have a home that is three-bedroom, three-bath with a full basement that we anticipate being under two ninety. Next slide. And then our final subdivision, and this is where we used ARPA funds to purchase the land, and we will be constructing ninety-four single-family homes. WEDA and the state budget allocated that, what was it, five hundred forty-four million dollars toward housing solutions in the last budget. We are the first subdivision in the entire state to actually be able to figure out how to access that money, so we have a three-point-four million dollar, one percent loan to put all the infrastructure in on this site. So ARPA money is buying the land, WEDA one percent loan is actually putting the infrastructure in, we are building the homes and going out to bid on the contractor right now, and the city of Plymouth, this is in the TIF district, the city of Plymouth is actually using their affordable housing fund as equity into the housing development, and we are tied taking no proceeds. And every single home's tax increment goes back to, in, replace the, replenish the affordable housing fund. So within six years, they will have more money in their affordable housing fund than when they have it today, with all the interest earned over that timeframe. Next slide. As you can imagine, we get a lot of interest, so we've actually created a housing, home buyer selection process, nine tiers. If you're moving in from outside the county, one through five is outside the county moving in. Tier six is someone living in the county that's an apartment. Tier seven is an existing homeowner, eight and nine are others. So we actually have, most of the homes have been sold to tier five and tier six, based on the numbers you heard earlier. This is just making sure that we're hitting targets with our investments in, in these entry-level homes and truly making an impact on the mission of the corporation. Next slide. If you have questions, I'm happy to address them, but I would just say, size and scale, Sheboygan County is very fortunate to have corporate headquarters with family-owned businesses, so very definitely learned that in the first six months that we were, had that platform. But my comment to you is- But my comment to you is, this model can be done, five homes a year, ten homes a year, at different-sized communities. It's really, put the structure together, do you have vacant sites in the community that you can, as a community, take ownership of and have, facilitate that conversation?
So we'll do a similar formula to what we've been doing with the presentations, with questions from the public during open public comment period, but any council questions right now? Steve?
Hi. I have a couple of questions relating to the livability and the viable neighborhoods and enhanced amenities that you mentioned. Like on pages, there's slides eleven and twelve where you're showing the layout. What sorts of enhanced amenities are you talking about? All I'm seeing are houses, but no sidewalks, no place for the kids to play in playgrounds. How do the kids get to the stores? I saw a couple of stores, but there's no way for pedestrians to access those. Have, what sorts of thoughts have you had about that?
Happy to deal with it. Very definitely, the city of Chaboyan Falls did not have a requirement for sidewalks. In Plymouth, we will have sidewalks on both sides of the street. In the pocket neighborhood, we actually have a half-acre park in the center of the neighborhood. If you go back to the slides, but there's a half-acre, if you look at where the roads are, there's a half-acre park in the center primarily to provide park area. Also, on the very left-hand side is a wetland area and also some vacant land that we are leaving as community park for that neighborhood. We are providing a park fund fee of five hundred dollars for every house being constructed, so that we are leaving that to the community and the city to say, how do you want to implement your park strategy in that neighborhood? But there is a walking trail, Plankview Trail is right along there, and we are providing access points for walking trails to that from the neighborhood subdivision. And the neighborhood subdivision is just north of the first one, so where you walk across the street, you go onto paths, then you go on another path to the walking trail.
Was that something that was sort of pre-existing, or was that built into the overall plan?
The pre-existing was the, the pre-existing was the Plankview Trail that goes from Plymouth all the way to Chaboyan. We are building up the rest of that modeling. As far as the parkland in the center of the, of the pocket neighborhood, that is purely designed on open space, places for kids to kick with the ball, things of that nature. In phase one, the subdivision, yeah, with sixty feet, the lots are, I would say, backyards for them to play is a challenge. That's why we are donating part of the property that we purchased for City Park to implement what they would like to do with the park fees that are being generated. Okay?
Any other questions from the board? All right. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Items can be approved together unless anything else wants to get pulled out. We've already decided to pull out number thirteen, the social media policy.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Mashak, seconded by Orin Smith. Heather, can you read in the consent agenda?
We have approval of common council meeting minutes from April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, Public Arts Commission meeting minutes from February sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and March sixth, twenty-twenty-five, Landmarks Commission meeting minutes from February fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and March fifth, twenty-twenty-five, Plan and Architectural Review Commission meeting minutes from March tenth, twenty-twenty-five, Library Board of Trustees meeting minutes from March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, CDA meeting minutes from February sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and March twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, Finance meeting minutes from March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Update on April one, twenty-twenty-five election numbers, approval of the amendments to the procurement policy to include protest and dispute procedures, approval of updated Title Six policy, approval of federal awards administration policy, social, nope, that's, approval of contract with Russell Law Office SE for city legal services, Keenbaum Iron Junk Dealer License Renewal, and March twenty-twenty-five financials.
All right, and then can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Mike Smith?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Aye.
Mashak?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
All right, passes. All right, next up, we have number seventeen, public hearing for the Sewer PAC Aquatic Plant Management Plan for Crabith and Tripp Lakes. This public hearing was requested through Sewer PAC, and so I'll hand it over to Michelle to talk about that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I have a short presentation, just to kind of recap the, the plan. It is eighty pages long, so this is a plan that they did all the surveying last year. They came out for two and a half days and went to both lakes, and kind of, we had a plan in two thousand and eighteen, so they went off of a lot of the points that were listed in that plan. So when you look at plant counts and things that were located, they went off our two thousand and eighteen plan.
Want to add?
Yes, please.
So like I said, they did both lakes, so next slide. So this is just kind of a recap. They did focus areas, they, they looked at the approval of the navigation channels, the native plants that are there. They were looking at invasive species, so the EWM is Erosian Water Mill Foil, and the CLP is the Curly Leaf Pond Weed, so they're abbreviated throughout the whole plan as well. And then they looked at our cattails. So they also saw that we had a significant reduction of invasive species when the drawdown happened, so there was a benefit of that, so we lost a lot of our invasive species. Some ongoing challenges is the decline in the plant diversity, so we need to kind of look in the future to get some more of our native plants back. We need to increase tolerant species, and we need to kind of focus on, on what our cattail looks like in the future. There was no sensitive species detected. We do have some lily pads and some other things that are noted in our lakes, but nothing that is endangered. Next slide. So the basic key findings was our plant species, some of them dropped in location. We reduced the Erosian Water Mill Foil, which is fantastic, but sadly, we have cattail that's covering a good chunk of both of our lakes, so a huge increase from the last time this happened. So same with Tripp, the vegetation coverage declined, species dropped, and then, but the two invasive species, one was eliminated and one is minimal. So this is, this is great for, for that kind of situation. Next slide. So the suggestions that they give us, which are just suggestions, which is a great thing that we need for applying for grants and moving forward for our lakes comprehensive plan. They suggest a different thing about prescribed burns, some chemical treatments, cattail removals. So these are all suggestions that we can work from. We could manually remove them, so that's, we've encouraged citizens that they can go in front of their, their lakefront property and remove them by hand, some of these cattails. We can try to maintain the lower levels of the invasive species, so working with Sewer PAC and the DNR to make sure that we accomplish that, restore some of our native plants, whether that's planting them ourselves, creating environments that they're going to grow. And then we can look into joining the Clean Boats Water Programs, monitor launches. I will be going out this week to start our citizens' lake monitoring as well, so going for temperatures, clarity, sucky discs, and all of those things happening. The geese or the swans will also go out on Thursday, so we have a lot of geese in the park this week, so the swans will also be going out this week. Next one? So I guess that we can, for our next steps, using this plan, we can move forward, great suggestions, and start applying for more, more grants. So those are some, some examples that they gave us. Conclusion, continue to be proactive. Sewer PAC has been fantastic with us, they're very invested in Whitewater, and so they definitely send a lot of information. Heidi Bunk sends me, from the DNR, sends me a lot of information as well, so working with these two entities to keep going. And then this document will become part of our lakes comprehensive plan, so it's a separate plan than the city comprehensive plan. I believe that was it.
All right, thank you. With this, we will open the public hearing. Public hearing speakers are allotted five minutes and follow the same premises of not to make redundant comments, et cetera. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the aquatic plant management plan for Crabith and Tripp Lake? Anyone wishing to speak? With that, I will call this, the public hearing closed. Is there any questions, comments from council? Steve?
I'm wondering if you could explain a little bit about any of the chemical treatment on the, for taking care of the cattails. What is that favored, or would just the prescribed burn be sufficient, prescribed burn and the, and manual?
So talking to Sewer PAC, they kind of put an array of things out there, so that if we decided a certain route, we can apply for permits, so it's kind of then in our plan as a possible suggestion. There are different chemicals, I don't, I don't know the words right offhand, I could look them up for you. There's different methods to doing it as well, opposed to drone, that's something we can definitely explore. Everything when it comes to dredging, chemical treatment, things like that, will all have to be permitted by the DNR, so we could start that process, and then we would look into what is approved for the chemicals and at what time of year you can use those as applications. So there wasn't a stronger recommendation from Sewer PAC, they just gave us options so that we could go different paths.
Thank you. Any other questions? All righty. So then, if it would be all right with council, there was a request to move number twenty-three, update on Staren Road speed bumps, up to the very next agenda item, as our partners with Whitewater Campus PD are here as well on that update. Do I need a motion or anything? Can we get a motion for that?
I move to move number twenty-three up after number seventeen.
Second.
So moved by Orin Smith, seconded by Hicks. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, so we will hand that over to Public Works to lead that off.
Sure. So at the last council meeting, I believe it was asked, we bring back the Staren Road for an update to see how the changes of the lower speed limit, the additional stop signs at Prince and at Warhawk, and reducing the speed from twenty-five to fifteen had with vehicles and pedestrian interaction. Also, back in, earlier this year, we decided to hold off on the installation of speed bumps or humps, and that was asked to be brought back here in spring or early summer here to be reviewed also. I did ask the university, if they were available tonight, to come and give any comments that they had seen and to provide any, and to provide any comments for the packet, but I was unable to get those before the packet went out, but I would imagine that the university chief does have those comments, so I will let him paraphrase those instead of me. And I did not see Brenda over there, so.
I didn't either.
Good evening. Brenda Jones, Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administrative Affairs at UW-Whitewater, and I want to thank you again for working with us, with us on this. So what we did was, we did do a, two counts. We did one count as far as vehicle count going down Staren Road, and the other piece we did, and they were actually at two separate times, was speed, checking the speed of the vehicles. So what we found was that the speed remained relatively unchanged. We lowered the speed limit on the road, so keep that in mind. In February of twenty-twenty-four, so roll back the clock almost a year, a little over a year, the average speed going down Staren Road was twenty-three miles per hour, with an eighty-fifth percentile of speed of twenty-six. At that time, the peak, peak period is at four PM, which still remains at four PM, but what we found with the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit at that time, is cars going twenty-two, twenty-three miles per hour were relatively going under the speed limit. What we found with the changes, so the changes that were made were primarily stop signs placed at Prince and Staren and at Warhawk and Staren. The, the stop and go in that area has dramatically, you know, set, set the speed for those vehicles down, but once they get past Warhawk and go between Warhawk and Prairie and coming back the other way, the speed is actually averaging again right around that twenty-two, twenty-three mile per hour mark, with the eighty-fifth percentile being exactly the same at the twenty-six miles per hour. So in the area where the stop signs are, they have to slow down, they have to stop. But on that other section, they are still going at the same speed, so now instead of having most of the vehicles being under the speed limit, we have the vehicles actually being over the speed limit, simply because we changed the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour. But the big noticeable change that we do have is the number of cars that are going down Staren, so the vehicle counts that we had are averaging two thousand to three thousand cars per day. In the past, a year ago when the counts were done, that was three to four thousand per day. So that's about, on average, that's twenty-four percent decrease. On the Tuesday and Wednesday of the week that we did the counts, they were actually down thirty-four to forty percent. Sundays were spot-on, same amount each day, so people on weekends must have the same habits on Sunday. But for the most part, they range fifteen to forty percent decrease in vehicles, which just taking the vehicles out of the equation helps make that street a safer street. So they must be detouring around, going either up to Schwager and coming down Warhawk, or going in a different direction to access the parking, because a lot of those vehicles are coming onto the campus during those daytime hours to park. So the, so in general, you know, we feel that it has made a positive impact, especially with the crosswalk that is between Prince Street and Warhawk, that crosswalk which goes between a group of our residence halls over to the other side and to the, to the other side where the classroom buildings are. That was, that was a very busy crosswalk also, that we have not been able to staff for the past several years. It has made a huge impact in safety, positive safety impact for that particular crosswalk. We still staff the crosswalk that is between Warhawk and Prairie, we're still staffing that, but there, again, even though the speed of the vehicles is pretty much the same as it was a year ago, there's fewer cars, so that has helped in that area. The one thing we did note, the, where the stop signs are placed for Warhawk Drive, if you are traveling east on Staren and you are coming up to that stop sign where you want to make a left-hand turn onto Warhawk, the stop sign is on the right-hand side of the road, and it's a two-lane street, so a lot of people are not seeing that stop sign. So the biggest change that we would, we would ask for is to have an additional stop sign placed either in the median or something, so that people coming down that street who are focusing on making that left-hand turn, see that they're supposed to stop, because that's what we're noticing, is that people are failing to stop at that particular intersection, and it's just going in that direction. So that is what we have. I think it's been very positive for the campus with the changes that we've made. Again, the speed bumps, we were looking at speed bumps between Warhawk and Prairie. I think the main thing that would achieve at this point would be slowing the cars, but we've already reduced the volume, so I guess it's a give or take. Any questions?
All right.
So this originally started looking at closing this area off, that was our goal, to make student safety better. Do you think we've achieved this and are acceptable? Is this a good compromise?
I do feel that we, we've been able to achieve, and, and Um, I do feel that we've, we've been able to achieve, um, and, and help the safety on that street. I'll roll, roll back to that discussion, we did propose those gates, but that was just one of different, of several different alternatives we were looking at.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that was one that we were trying to, uh, look at and see if that would work. Uh, but this is very, a very good impact for the campus, and we've had, uh, positive feedback from our students, um, and some of our staff and faculty, so I think this has been a good thing. People don't like the stop and go near Prince and Warhawk, but it's doing what it needs to do, right? It's slowing people down, and it's making them have to stop and slow down. So I, I think overall, it's a positive impact. We do have our student government president here, if he would like to comment on more information from the students themselves, um, and if Chief Kitterland wanted to say anything, that's up to him. But I'm reiterating what he's been telling me from, uh, the officers, so.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna put that stop sign in, by the way. That's easy, Brad's already got it.
Any other questions from council? Okay.
Yeah, the ultimate goal was to make that a safer area, and, and I think we've done that, so I appreciate that.
And I can say too, anecdotally, um, people that know I'm on council have also mentioned that they like the, the changes and the stop sign, that, the median issue.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Alrighty, next we'll go to the city manager report, and you can also lump in your, uh, two proclamations as well.
We're gonna fly, because there's a lot of other things on the agenda. As always, uh, now, all details of the city manager report, including all of the notes, are contained within the packet that's available, so people can please feel free to follow those. Uh, basically, in Public Works, uh, we took delivery of the trees for the tree sale, and that happened. Uh, we're also working on some street sweeping, the water department is continuing to replace meters, and the GIS department is starting to work on some address discrepancies. Uh, last couple of weeks, in the IT department, they've dealt with a total of thirty-one tickets. Uh, they were here for spring splash, assisting the PD with some of our technological issues, not issues, we just have things we do every year. Uh, but most importantly, the server replacement project is on track, phase three is beginning soon, but, uh, what that means is all of the things are here, they've been set up, and I can't speak the language, but we're going into, uh, operating systems and SQL upgrades wherever possible. Uh, also, working on the upcoming budget cycle for all things IT. In the police department, Detective Kevin Gowan was sworn in, he'll complete an administrative training week, as well as a modified field training schedule, before assuming his detective role, and we're very excited, so thank you, Kevin, for joining us. SRO Garcia attended International Children's Day at Lincoln Elementary, and a huge thank you to our dispatchers who work tirelessly, with four monitors at least going at all times, twenty-four hours a day. It was, uh, Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, so thank you to Heidi Gempler, Jeanette Gonzalez, Macy Sorak, Kristen Bishop, Kenna Sorak, Emma Gerling, and Adam Moore for all they do to serve our department and community, and sorry for any names. Uh, also, as well, it was Administrative Professionals Day, so thank you Kathy Schwartz, uh, Angela Sarr, Jamie Hoff, and the excellent work that they do to make the rest of the department run smoothly. Fire Department, uh, April ninth through the sixteenth, seven calls, uh, for service each day, on average. Uh, we responded, uh, to some mutual aids, April ninth, there was a mobile home fire. Uh, Saturday, the twelfth, we responded to Fort Atkinson for a MABUS call, um, with a UTV fire, uh, et cetera. Uh, the following two weeks, six calls, average per day, uh, twelve of those calls required paid-on call service, uh, and mutual aid was requested one time on April twenty-second for a semi-trailer fire. At the library, the library was closed on April seventeenth and eighteenth for new fire panel equipment, uh, water heater and water softener were also installed, uh, and on Saturday, April nineteenth, the library hosted a free program, Music and the Art Wonder Club, uh, twenty children were there, and they explored the world, let's see what they had, we had a petting zoo, uh, upcycled art project, and engaging in musical, whimsical, and movement program, and that happened at the Cravath Lakefront Center. Parks and Recreation, we've got a new thing happening, it's the Cravath After Dark, those are the movies, June, July, August, and September, so please join us for that, it's a pretty solid lineup. Summer Camp, we've also started taking registrations, so please, uh, join us for that if you're interested. Um, let's see, eight weeks of themed camp with exciting programs, it's just one fifty a week, so registration opened May first. Media Services, we are hiring for a media producer, so if you know someone that's interested, you are interested, please feel free to fill out an application, I'm looking at you, Jeff, either one of the Jeffs. Uh, and also in Human Resources, we're accepting positions for seasonal help, paid-on call, I'm assuming that's firefighters, and lifeguards. Also, uh, Sam has rejoined us as, uh, filling in for our media producer, he was an intern last year, so welcome back. And also, in the, for the first time in a long time, we're doing a city golf outing scheduled for June twentieth at Willowbrook. Council members are invited, invited to join us, so if you want more information, please reach out. This was an idea that our staff came up with when we asked them to put forward, uh, something they would like to see happen, so we're trying to support that. Oh, we also are, uh, working through implementation of the new performance evaluation process, which Sarah's favorite piece of feedback she got was, "It wasn't terrible," from one of our department heads, she's very happy with that. Alright, as always, if you need to reach out, Chief of Staff's information is there. I am the city manager, and with that, there is plenty of other things on the agenda, so I will turn it back to you after I do these two proclamations. Just kidding, alright. Historic Preservation Month in May, this one's a good one, "Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, and whereas the City of Whitewater desires to express our commitment to the preservation of our city's irreplaceable and invaluable historical resources, now therefore I, John Wydell, City Manager of the City of Whitewater, Wisconsin, do proclaim May twenty-twenty-five as Wisconsin Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the people of the City of Whitewater to join their fellow citizens across the state of Wisconsin, recognizing and participating in the special observance dated the sixth of May twenty-twenty-five. And thank you to our Landmarks Committee for all the work that they do. Also, it's Archaeology Month, so whereas archaeological preservation gives the citizens of Whitewater a deeper understanding and appreciation of their unique and diverse heritage, and whereas Wisconsin's archaeological heritage contributions to the economic and social and cultural well-being of our cities, villages, and rural areas throughout the state enhances our nation's heritage, and whereas Wisconsin declares its commitment to the preservation of the states and our cities' irreplaceable and invaluable historic and prehistoric resources, and urges all citizens and communities to preserve and protect their special heritage, and whereas Wisconsin's Archaeology Month provides an opportunity for all citizens of all ages to enjoy, celebrate, and take pride in our states and nations' diverse heritage, now therefore I, John Wydell, City Manager of the City of Whitewater, Wisconsin, do proclaim May twenty-twenty-five as, well, as of proclaimed, Wisconsin Archaeology Month in the City of Whitewater, Wisconsin, dated the sixth day of May twenty-twenty-five. Apologies for the stuff at the end.
Any questions for John from council? Alright.
Thank you very much.
Alright, uh, number twenty-one, Staff Report Regarding School Resource Officer Q and A. Hand it over to PD.
I'll wait till you get this up, Brad. Okay, um, first, I just want to say thank you for giving me the time to speak to this issue tonight. Um, I have a fairly lengthy memo in the packet, that's got, uh, probably three to four pages of Q and A. Um, I thought the more effective way to communicate this is probably through a PowerPoint. So, um, what I'm gonna cover here, uh, some of the basic information about, uh, just what is an SRO, um, what does our SRO here in Whitewater do specifically? Um, I'm also gonna address and identify the concerns that, uh, have been communicated by the superintendent, uh, and then I'm gonna finish by discussing our vision and goals moving forward. Next slide, please. So starting with the basics here, uh, what is a school resource officer, and I'm gonna probably refer to it as an SRO most of the time here, but, um, at its most basic, um, this is a sworn law enforcement officer that has arrest powers, and also has jurisdictional authority in the geographic location of our schools. Uh, so this individual is focused on school-related law enforcement matters, and is dedicated to enhancing school safety. Um, this person also serves as a resource for both faculty and students, and emphasizes relationship building. Um, this person is also highly trained, one of the trainings that they attend is the NASRO training, which is National Association of School Resource Officers. Next slide, please. So looking at what our SRO here in Whitewater does, I won't, uh, go through the entire list here, but some of the basic duties, um, include being a visible and active law enforcement figure in our schools, promoting safety, and deterring crime. Uh, that individual investigates and acts on criminal activity that impacts our students, serves as a classroom educational resource using approved materials, and leverages partnerships with our community resources. Um, these are agencies that we have contact with daily in law enforcement. Um, just today, we, we have, um, an investigation, our SRO is working through a sexual assault that, um, is impacting a middle, middle school student, um, and, and he's able to use some of the resources down at Walworth County to forensically interview that, that student. So, just one example of, of some of those more basic functions. Next slide. Looking at some of the other ancillary, uh, activities of the SRO, um, often involved with organizing or attending some of these activities, uh, the cops and kid, uh, kids' book readings, we, uh, go to each and every, uh, elementary school throughout the year to do that, uh, Pick a Day Come and Play, that's the, the photo depicted here is actually Officer Martin at Washington Elementary, um, International Children's Day, which I know John alluded to earlier, um, and then also attending things like senior portfolio presentations, uh, educational presentations on things like drug use, vaping, fighting, cellphone safety, things of that nature. Next slide. Um, so I know this is small, but I, I thought this was important to include, um, this was published in Rutledge in twenty-nineteen. Um, NASRO, again, that National Association of School Resource Officers, um, found six proven benefits of SRO programs, and I'm gonna list those. Uh, the first one is prevention or minimization of property damage in the schools and surrounding areas. Number two is prevention of student injuries and even death due to violence, drug overdoses, et cetera. Number three, reduction of the need for schools to call nine-one-one. Number four, reduction of the likelihood that a student will get a criminal record. Five, increase the likelihood that students will get help from social service and healthcare systems. And number six, increase in feelings of safety among students and staff. So with those things in mind, um, what is our stance at the Whitewater Police Department? Um, in the absolute strongest terms possible, we believe the following three things. First, it is in the best interest of student safety for the Whitewater Police Department to maintain our SRO presence in Whitewater schools. Number two, the relationship created between the police department and the school district should be a partnership rather than a simple transactional service. And number three, we desire to address identified concerns collectively, and encourage the involvement of the district attorney, city attorney, and school board council in the process to ensure we have an agreement that will serve both the city and the school district long-term. Next slide. So now I'm gonna, uh, just address the concerns that have been communicated by the superintendent. They're listed here, uh, the first one had to do with SRO absences from the schools, and related costs to the district. Second was parental contact prior to investigations, and then the third thing was the motive district communication with our SRO. Next slide. Um, just so to begin here with the absences, I think it's important to understand what those absences were for. Um, our SRO had a total of twenty-five full days absent from the school district. Eight of those days were related to training, five being the week-long NASRO basic SRO training. One day was a mass casualty, uh, training. Two days was a sexual assault investigation training. Um, next he had six, I'm sorry, twelve days of sick leave, bereavement or vacation, and then five days covering patrol staffing, um, which included assisting with special assignments, including search warrants. Um, there were also fourteen partial day absences, those are related to court, training, sick leave or vacation, and another day, uh, helping to cover patrol staffing. Next slide. I think it's important to note that in the absence of our SRO, our patrol staff is always available to respond to any emergent calls that happen in the schools. Um, however, moving forward, we are absolutely open to a per diem cost structure that would alleviate the concerns regarding paying for an SRO when he or she is not present. Um, and then ultimately, our goal, and, and we've been saying this for, you know, six months, as we, um, were preparing for our referendum, our goal is to get a second SRO in the schools, uh, and that would ensure daily coverage in the district, and it would be more consistent with the SRO coverage ratios that we see in other districts. Um, here in the Whitewater Unified School District, we have one SRO for one thousand nine hundred and eighty-six students. East Troy School District has one SRO for one thousand four hundred and eighty-two students. Watertown has one SRO per nine hundred and seventy-two students, and again, this is a ratio, it's obviously a larger district, but they have three SROs. And Delevin Darien School District has one SRO per nine hundred and eight students, and again, a ratio there is they have two SROs. So adding an SRO for us would bring us closer, uh, in line with these districts at about one SRO per one thousand students. Next slide. Alright, addressing parental contact prior to investigations, our practice is to contact parents prior to interviewing whenever feasible, and I will say that is the vast majority of incidents. That said, our SRO must follow state law as interpreted by the Walworth County DA, and secondarily follow school board policy. Most recent, uh, issue that we've, we've had come up, uh, involved interviewing a student who was reported to be distributing child sexual assault material from a cellphone in school. In that case, and in all of the other cases that I am aware of, our actions have consistently been in the best interest of victims, as well as the integrity of the investigations, while ensuring we are not infringing upon student rights. Uh, all of this being said, our goal is to have further discussions with the school board, district attorney, city attorney, and school district council, so that we can reach a consensus on this issue. Next slide. And then the third concern, uh, has to do with district communication with the SRO. I think we are all in agreement that when our SRO is in a school building, direct communication between staff and the SRO makes the most sense. Um, however, when our SRO is not in a school building, our preference is that he or she be requested through dispatch, um, and there's a multitude of reasons. First, it ensures an efficient and timely response, it ensures that an important call does not go unanswered, and we've all had situations where even if we were carrying it on us, we didn't get a cellphone call. Um, it ensures proper documentation and logging of calls, and it also helps to ensure that all of our sworn staff are aware of SRO activity, um, and that's really important in the event, uh, there's a critical incident happening, happening where more officers are needed, um, that reduces that lag in time. Um, finally, I know one of the concerns that was presented was, um, sensitive information being put out over the radio. We do not put out personally identifiable information, um, of students over the radio. Next slide. So what is our vision as we look to the future? Again, with the passage of our referendum, our goal is to add a second SRO. Um, the way we see this working best is to have one SRO that is designated for the high school, and to have a second SRO that is designated for the middle school and our elementary schools. So looking at what a, a high school SRO would be, uh, responsible for, uh, high school calls for service, high school special events, and then focusing, focusing on getting to know our high school population. That person would also be primarily responsible for our school safety training initiatives, um, like entry security in all of our schools, as well as, um, regular active threat training. Um, this is an area where truly, uh, there has been a shortcoming. Our last full-scale training for active threat occurred in twenty-seventeen, and in my opinion, that is unacceptable. Next slide, please. So again, with, with a second SRO, we would have an individual that was assigned to the middle school and elementary schools. That individual be, would be responsible for calls to those schools, as well as special events at those schools, focusing on getting to know our younger students, and would be responsible for outreach programs like the cops and kids book reading, Pick a Day Come and Play, International Children's Day, and, and the list goes on. Uh, more importantly, I think, uh, than anything else, is a second SRO- More importantly, I think than anything else, is a second SRO truly gives us the flexibility to cover for absences. So if one of our SROs is at the NASRO training, a week-long training, or does end up getting a sick child and cannot be there, the other SRO can cover the entire district. So to close, our top priority is ensuring student safety, and we believe that having an officer in the schools is the best way to do that. We want to work collectively and transparently to address any concerns so we can continue our longstanding relationship with the Whitewater Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Chief Meyer?
I have a follow-up. The active threat training since 2017, have we been offering that? What's the, it's been 10 years next school year?
Yes, we've been working through that and trying to get that to be a more regular thing on a three-year cycle. Last year, we were able to get that done. We're on cycle, the second year of the cycle this year.
Okay.
Number 22 from Finance, 2025 Property Assessment Update. Any comments from public regarding that?
I'm Larry Katchel, 457 South Pecan Boulevard. Your first night is filling in, so don't worry. I don't know if I can get any of the details of the negotiations between the two boards, but help me understand how negotiation by press release is a good idea? When the city manager put out a press release, laying things out, made it very public, I don't know why they left, but I believe that Cameron was here to deal with this issue. I know WTMJ ran a story on it. We don't need this. But they'll get to it. They'll get to it. I have some questions on, in your packet. Is this redlined version from the school district, or is it from the city?
City.
It is the city. Okay.
You shouldn't be answering questions from public comment.
Okay. Don't mean to get you in trouble. In it, on page 334, you are asking the school district to pay a per diem rate of $500 per day for SRO services. Are those for one each SRO, or for both together? Can anybody, the council, this is not public agenda, this is on the issue, can anybody answer that question? John, can you answer? It's, point 13C, the school district shall pay a per diem rate of $500 per day for SRO services. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they currently pay $60,000 for the service of one SRO officer. If this is for each, to me, that looks like it is a pay increase of 50%. It's roughly 180 days in the school year where the kids are there, maybe a little bit less. That seems like a pretty hefty jump. I know all the members of the school board very well. There's not one of them that doesn't have safety of that district as a top concern. But help me understand another point. I believe that position was approved as part of the referendum to be an additional SRO officer. I don't think the school district initially asked for it. I may be wrong. I don't care about that point. But it was approved for the funding of it, and so it was approved by the taxpayers to pay for it, and now you're going to go and have the school district pay you back for it. That's kind of like double dipping. Whether it's the city or the school district paying for it, one's out of the taxpayer's right pocket, one is out of the taxpayer's left pocket. And so I'm unclear on what that is, but since it was already run, and it says, I believe in the referendum, that if the SRO is not used by the district, then they'll just go back into patrol. So it's a spot that's already paid. So I'm unclear on that. There would be $60,000 or $90,000, depending on whether you're using the old rate or the new rate in here, or whatever grant in between, and it seems to me that that's unaccounted for, because it was approved by the taxpayers in your referendum. But let the boards work with each other. Let's not make this an issue of individual personalities. We don't need any more bad press in the community.
Chuck Mills, 336 Witten. I just, I had a couple of observations on the subject. So one of them is Pat Hefty doesn't have a good track record, even for, in the academics area at this point, we're in the bottom third of the state, and I doubt she has any experience in security, nor does the school board. And so even if they were going to hire this outside entity, I don't even know how they would do the interview. I mean, they don't know what they're doing. The city has a track record for getting it right. We got through COVID. We got through the migration thing. Everybody's secure, everybody's safe. I think they've done a great job. There's been no biases, and, you know, of course, the people he's had in the school system have done a perfect job. So I can only guess that this is, and this is of my belief, that Pat Hefty has to control everything, just like she did the pool or anything else that comes along. And now the pool's handled by John Whittle and Eric, and it's running beautiful. We don't need her involved in the security of our children, because she's not got a track record for getting it right. Another thing that worries me is I think there could be biases. Some, if she controls that entity, then some kids may get away with things, and other kids may get a pass, and other ones be treated harshly, where, again, the city has a track record of non-bias. I mean, a great track record of non-bias, considering the situation with what's going on around town here. So there again, they're doing it perfect. Another thing that I'd like you to think about, well, first of all, doesn't the city have the sovereignty of that school? I mean, they're not a separate entity that is apart from this. I mean, if something happens down there, our police department's going to be down there and involved. And then, what else was I thinking? So anyway, it comes down to what's best for our kids. I don't care about the money, although that was a good observation, sir. Thank you very much. And the fact that I can't find anything wrong with the current system. If it's not broke, don't fix it, and don't fall for this Pat Hefty stuff. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Any other public comment regarding SRO? And move on to number 22, 2025 Property Assessment Update from Finance.
All right, we had, yesterday we had open book session, and today, the date on here is wrong. I apologize for that. It was actually this morning from 9:00 to 12:00. A little bit behind the ball, I didn't get the information until after the packet went out last time, but everybody would have already received their letters. Essentially, we're seeing increases of about 7% across the board. If you take nothing else away, the most important piece of this is regardless of how much your property value has increased, that does not mean that your property taxes are going to be increasing at that same rate. Those are different things. There's a few things that we've done differently this year. I can tell you, last year, I received numerous phone calls about that, a lot of panic, and that was because the average last year, I think, was 20% of an increase. We put out a lot of things on social media, we did a lot of educating for residents, I worked one-on-one with several of them who have had concerns. That has kind of mitigated, I've had maybe three this year that have had an issue, that called, got their questions answered, and were fine, and I did not hear anything, any complaints about open book yesterday or today. So you guys have any questions about the process?
Just hammer home that 7% in property value increase does not necessitate.
Yeah, it's not the same. They're not the same.
We will get there.
Any questions about the process? Next up is board review, if there is anybody that's challenging.
Any public comment regarding that update? Number 24, Bird Scooter Updates. Brad?
Sure, so in your packet, the staff report with some numbers of comparison between 2023, 2024, but the biggest thing is that we were notified last week that Bird Scooters will be pulling out of the city. They anticipate to have all scooters removed by the end of this week. Basically, that decision was driven by impacts of tariffs on company-wide vehicle shipments and allocation of their scooters to bigger markets. So that's the update I have for you, is that Bird Scooters will be leaving the city.
Just one question, will that then terminate the MOU?
Yes.
So if they come back, that's?
It'll have to be a new MOU.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Then moving on to number 13, yep, 13, social media policy removal, public comment on socials, I'll look over to John for that.
I don't necessarily have anything additional. Councilperson Hicks asked that I put this on the agenda, and then asked to be out of the consent, so I guess I'm looking at the council to see what concerns there are.
I just want to state, I pulled it out so that the public, they were talking about social media, and on social media, they were complaining about the policy, so I wanted to make sure there was a chance for all the public to speak on it if they wish, but personally, I am all for limiting or removing commenting. It's, we've all got email addresses, we all have phone numbers, you know, city staff and council members. We've got open public meetings. If there's an issue with something being posted, we can easily be gotten hold of and address it.
I do want to point out one technical difference, it was in the attorney's memo, the library and the police department are not subject to the city policy. However, Dan is here, and he can tell you, he would have already turned comments off on the police, but for, he's waiting to move with the city. I hope I, if I didn't capture that right, please feel free to speak for yourself. So I'm happy to take any questions, comments, concerns, let's do public comment, and then see where we're at.
So open for public comment?
There'd be one memo update to that, it would also include the fire department.
Like the fire department would be with the police and?
Would be police and library, that they would also have to establish their own public comment policies and procedures.
So that will open public comment regarding this item.
Hello, 1 Jason Gleason, 324 South Prince Street. I am a business owner here in town and contractor, also previous CDA board member. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. So I'm actually against the removal of public commentary. I understand that some things that are posted are not helpful. They're hurtful, harmful, distasteful, and just downright appalling sometimes, but it also is a platform of social discourse, and I get that we all have phone numbers, we all have email addresses. Sometimes people don't feel confident reaching out and talking to somebody like their alderman or council member, whoever that may be. That person's not me, I definitely talk to people in the community, and I just want to let you guys know that I talked to quite a few friends and neighbors of mine who live in this community who are marginalized members, and they actually wrote the same conclusion that I did. Public discourse is more important than hurt feelings, and I guess I just wanted to challenge you as leaders in our community that it's our job to separate the wheat from the chaff, so to speak. Take the useful and the distasteful stuff, put it to the side, and take the stuff that is useful, and see if we can build with it. And what I actually brought with me, it's funny, I'm actually in a communications class right now in college, and this is Media Essentials, a Brief Introduction by Campbell Martin, Phibos, and Harmsman. What I'm reading to you is Media Expressions and its relation to the First Amendment and democracy in society. Page 397, "As citizens, we must pay attention to who is included and excluded from opportunities, not only to buy products, but also to voice their views and thereby shape our nation's culture and political landscape. To accomplish this, we need to challenge our journalists and our leaders. More important, we need to challenge ourselves to become watchdogs, critical consumers and engaged citizens who learn from the past, care about the present, and map our mass media's future." So my challenge to you, and I'm saying this as a member of this community for over a decade now, who has lived here and has not been reached out to personally by one person, never my alderman, never a city council member, as a constituent to ask me what my opinion is, I think removing any form of social discourse dilutes our democracy in the city.
Any others for public comment?
Chuck Mills, 336 Witten. I was just thinking that, you know, I get it, sometimes people don't tell you the things you want to hear, but I was hoping that you would want to hear from us, that you'd want our feedback, not just to dictate your policies and your thoughts. And yeah, occasionally, there'll be some moron that'll probably be disruptive, but it would seem to me that you ran for these positions, and you were going to be our voice, but if you're not going to hear it, what was, why'd you bother? That's all I got to say on this.
Any actions, counsel, or recommendations, council wants to make this point?
Moved to approve social media policy removal, public comments on socials.
So moved by Hicks, seconded by Mayshak. Heather, call the roll.
Orin Smith?
Hi.
Sayun?
Hi.
Mayshak?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Mike Smith?
I'm Stane.
Hicks?
Moving into Hearing of Citizen Comments, no formal council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised may become part of a future agenda. Participants are allotted a five-minute speaking period. Specific items listed in the agenda may not be discussed at this time, however, citizens are invited to speak on those specific issues at the time the council discusses that particular item. To make comment during this period or during any agenda item on a computer or handheld device, locate the controls on your computer to raise your hand. You may need to move your mouse to see these controls. On a telephone, dial *6 to unmute, dial *9 to raise your hand. At this time, is there any citizen comments on non-agenda items?
This would include the discussion?
And the discussion on the housing.
Larry Katchel, 457 South Pecan, again. On the presentation, we had very good. I happened to get a chance to talk to Brian earlier today specifically how they did it. That's an example of where the subsidy is getting into the hands of the buyer, they're making the homes cheaper. And the advantage that he has up there is they've got, like you mentioned, some big family businesses that each put in $2 million. I don't know that we have that down here. It's a countywide thing, but something like that. The other great thing of that program is they didn't tie anything up in TID, where the taxpayers then have to front the bill for those taxes that are not going to come in for the next 15 to 20 years. So to look at something like that on a smaller scale through the county, I don't know if you have any ARPA funds left. I know a lot of them went toward the new water tower, directly or indirectly, but something like that, because I look at their price points, and I'm assuming he just included the structure, not the land, but their small lot sizes, and since they bought them all, they formed that Development Corp. as a nonprofit. I'm assuming they're not that expensive. But when our homes that we're talking about, although none of those, you know, the nineteen that are going up out by the airport, and then what was proposed, although right now it's maybe on hold, um, all past the high school, were four hundred thousand. And four hundred thousand is not the average price of a home in this community. Four hundred thousand is not affordable housing. And so if there's a way to find a way to do it, I've said from day one that we need more single-family housing, not troubled by a form of a subsidy. I just think the one that you've used is much higher than what our surrounding communities are using, and you're not filling the need of workforce housing at four hundred thousand. My house isn't worth that, and I've had lots of increases in appraised value over the last few years and in taxes. So, um, I just, I wish, I wish you could have presented that a year ago. And, uh, but the last two speakers you brought in, both from Washington County and from Sheboygan, you know, great programs and, and something like that. It's not too late to look at something like that. Funding will be the hard part. Thank you.
Pat Blackmer, four forty-five West Center Street. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our city manager for the proclamations regarding the month of May as our national, state, and local historic preservation month and archaeological month. And in addition, I would like to express my gratitude to our city parks and recreation manager, director, Kevin Beam, his crew, and the Department of Public Works for the work that has been accomplished to return our city-owned local landmark, the Ephigie Mounds Preserve, to a welcoming cultural historic site. Not only is it easily accessible to our citizens, but serves as an inviting tourist attraction for which we should be very proud. May the good work continue. Thank you.
Jeff Knight, four oh five Panther Court. Just a suggestion long-term to the city council. We've had a couple embarrassing things flare up. First, the pool, and now this SRO. And, you know, you do a nice job with the university of collaborating. You've done city council meetings on campus, and I think somehow, especially now getting the new superintendent, saying some goals and objectives, that maybe the phone is the first way we talk, you know, or sit down and have a conversation. And maybe what should happen is the city council should host a city council meeting at the school district, where you could all sit down and have a conversation and figure out a way that we can improve communication. Because for me personally, I think we all, everybody in this room, everybody in this community, should be a little bit embarrassed that we can't seem to figure out a way to get along. Thank you.
And Buddy online? All right. Moving on then, down to number twenty-five, resolution to create Lakes District in the city of Whitewater. Hand it back over to Michelle.
Okay. Um, I did not mention it at the beginning of the plant stuff. But out in the lobby here are a bunch of lake resources. You can help yourself too if you have a neighbor, a friend that needs anything. There's an array of things of rain gardens, um, and different things about how about your lawn clippings and fertilizer. And then all the pictures that you see are from our lakes, so they are not Google images. They are from, um, Mr. Dale Moss. Most of them have been taken from the McCormick, uh, property. So, um, we thank him for all the pictures as well. So there's a lot of creatures on our lakes, and that's just a, a sample of, of what we have. So... Okay, so tonight's the big night for the Lakes Advisory Committee. We have about eighty percent of our, our committee here, ready to answer questions, um, that you guys may have as well. Uh, and why we're here tonight is they are a group of dedicated people that are looking for you to pass the resolution tonight to create a Lakes District for Crevath and Tripp Lakes. A Lake District would allow all the stakeholders in the community to have a say in what happens, um, at our lakes. So it's kind of the most democratic way to get everybody's voice heard and get everybody together and move forward to meet the needs of the entire community. It empowers citizens, so we're asking for the Lake District to be created and invite the citizens out to be part of what we are doing. So as of two thousand twenty-four, there are four Lake Districts in Jefferson County and ten in Walworth County. Next slide. So, um, the Lakes Advisory Committee is asking to create the boundaries for the Lakes District to be the entire city, not just the riparian owners, because they believe the entire city benefits from both of our lakes. So they are asking, we are asking for the entire Lakes District to be the city limit. So there's an image there of, of the current city limits. Next slide. So Rachel is here. We have chatted about the monies on, on options and what this may look like. So this is just an example. This is not set in stone. This is not where, this is a thing that you guys are going to decide where we're headed. But, and there's a cap. There is a cap to this. So there is boundaries in place that you can, the Lake District needs to, to follow. So, uh, the cap is two dollars and fifty cents per thousand. So, um, at no time could a citizen be charged, um, at a hundred thousand dollar value, be charged more than two hundred and fifty dollars. And this is just, this is state statute. This is a cap. This is not to say this is where we're headed. The budget is set at the annual meeting. We did an example in the past of two hundred and fifty thousand, just as an example. This is something, if you're thinking about a harvester, all of the improvements for the lakes. So we just picked the number of two hundred and fifty thousand. So if that was the number, you would vary. A home worth three hundred thousand would be looking at about seventy-eight dollars. And that's give or take. That's depending on, uh, the tax levy, and Rachel can, can kind of go into more if you have more details on that. But these, there is no minimum as well. So if a budget is voted on as zero, then there is no taxation. And then we move forward, this monies, these monies would not be seen to two thousand twenty-six. So this would be an annual budget. You would vote on it, and the monies would be for two thousand twenty-six. Next slide. So if this passes, what are you guys looking at? So the resolution passed, you create a Lake District. It doesn't end there. You guys become the Board of Commissions for the Lakes District. You would move forward as the board, the governing board. In order for that to change, the Lakes Advisory Committee would go out and they would seek a petition to have, um, twenty percent of the community, um, sign this petition, bring it to you. And then at the annual meeting or a special meeting, whatever comes first, then we would have to hold an election for new board and commissioners. Until that takes place, uh, the city council would be the governing board. Next slide. Annual meeting, so it is required for the Lakes District to hold an annual meeting between May twenty-second and September eighth, eighth. In the original resolution that we wrote, we had just picked a date of July twenty-six at one P.M. So if you look at your resolution that's in your packet, um, there is a date for your annual meeting. That's not set in stone. We can change that date, but we just picked, um, a date that was further enough to organize, but yet still fell within the boundaries. And like I said, at this, uh, budget meeting, um, that is when you would create your budget. In the People of the Lakes book that I included in your packet, there is an example budget in the back of some examples. And you, as a Lake District Board of Commission, would decide on this budget and bring it to the annual meeting to be voted on. Like I said, it could be voted on, um, an example of two hundred and fifty, or it could be a zero budget. Next slide. So there were questions about partnerships. Um, we definitely would be, um, still partnering with city. So the Lakes District would have roles and the city would still have roles. So these are some of the examples that we gave. There's definitely local representation, uh, planning and zoning, um, environmental projects, uh, tourism. Definitely tourism is a big one as well. We have a lot of people using our parks. Uh, we do definitely want to enhance, um, with peers, kayak launches, ADA, kiosks, things like that, and new fountain. There's a lot of things that we've talked about. No matter what happens, um, they will be moving forward. So, but there's a lot of partnership that can happen. If there's some type of algae bloom, if there's things happening in the lake, I've been going to some classes that help with emergency communications to get that to the public, talking about the geese, the droppings, um, when we had possible bird flu stuff happening. That's stuff we would all work together on to make sure that that gets out to the community. So there's definitely partnerships that wouldn't stop whatever happens. Next slide. Uh, where we're at. So there was questions about a timeline. And on this, when I reference, uh, a comprehensive plan, I'm meaning the Lakes Comprehensive Plan, not the city one. So we've worked closely with Sewer Pack, um, to get the plant management, um, plan going. We have applied for a grant that we did not receive, uh, but we will continue to apply for multiple grants and all the grants that we are eligible to apply for. We do water quality testing, public education. So as we move forward, we're going to go through and still work with Sewer Pack and move to our goals and have, have these things happen no matter what. Next slide. So, eh, when we were here in December, you guys asked us to, uh, have some open meetings, do some more events, do some more education sessions. So things that we've done to get here, um, in two thousand twenty-four, we held, um, a summit at eight forty-one Brew House. And then this year, we had hosted five educational sessions. And then within that, we meet monthly. Our ordinance for the Lakes Advisory says we can meet quarterly, but we actually meet monthly because our group is very dedicated and wants to move forward. So we are setting goals, we're event planning, we're addressing concerns, and just hitting all those points that, that we want to make sure are happening. Next slide. So here's just a recap of the education summary sessions that we had. So it lays out the dates, the location, um, how many people attended. We had people sign in. Um, some people elected to put their first and last name, some people only first name. We said we would not share those information, just asking if they lived on a body of water. The most heavily attended was definitely Stair Park Community Building. Um, we had it as one of our seniors in the park program. So a lot of our, um, regular attendees at that programs were there. And, and Mr., uh, Councilmember Shannon, thank you for attending. So we had a lot of good feedback. That was probably our most kind of communicated and, uh, boisterous group as well. So those are kind of the stats on, on who attended on when. And we offered, uh, nighttime, daytime, and weekend opportunities for people. Next slide. So this is just a recap. I won't go through all of these. Um, they're in your packet, um, just of, of what people said. There's statements in here, there's questions in here. And so the questions, we actually put the responses to of what we said to individuals. Um, there were a lot of comments about the swans, um, so that was nice to see people really, um, really kind of enjoyed those. So this was a summary of, of what we, we heard from, from the community. And so this is our Lakes Advisory Crew Committee. So if you have questions, I'm sure, um, they're going to get up here and share their passion as well. But the lakes are more than just a body of water for us. Um, they're definitely a vital part of the community. So, uh, we're asking that you, uh, make us a Lake District.
Questions? Want to first thank you and the entire Lakes Committee for all of your hard work and for holding those information sessions. It was definitely useful when I, uh, went to that, that one at, uh, Seniors in the Park and feeling lucky that I apparently ended up at the most boisterous one. So, um, at this point, I'll open it to any initial questions from council.
So it might sound really ignorant when I ask this question, but this is something that bothers me and it just doesn't feel right. So once the control is passed on from the city council, then that small group of people can decide to put a levy on the entire city.
Yes.
I don't see how that is a good idea. I love everything else, everything else about it.
It's to involve the citizens. It's to get your community involved. And yes, it's, um, important to put all the communication out there. And the, the People of the Lakes kind of lays it out of, you have to mail things out to everybody. You have to lay out the agenda. And it's really educating the public and hoping they show up. And yeah, it all depends on, on who shows up and who votes.
Yeah, I just, I just remember the dredging of the lake before it got bad, people didn't want to invest. They didn't want to spend additional money. So I just, to make it a second spot, that they have to go to a meeting to express their concerns and then be voted on by likely people living around the lake is a huge concern to me. I, if this would have been proposed as just around the lake, Lake District, I think I'd be more for it. But as a whole city, I'm, it's just, it feels really wrong because of that, those reasons.
The other, the other option would be if we don't follow a resolution, would be to petition. The, the group could petition the city, correct?
They could, and they have to get fifty-one percent, I believe, of the city.
And they automatically have control in their own, without council involvement. Okay.
What, um, is there, the, the one policy I can think of off the top of my head is that state law limits that to five percent. And the city has an internal, um, thing that holds it at three point five percent. I'm looking over at Rachel. Yeah, one like taking that and borrowing. So is there any way that a Lake District could put tighter restrictions on things? For example, no more than, I'm throwing out a random number here, one dollar fifty cent per thousand dollars. Or does it, or is state law, state law, and you can't put in a tighter?
That would be, to do the budget would be, you guys would propose, if it passed, you would propose a budget and it would be voted on. So you could create whatever dollar amount you wanted, up to two dollars and fifty cents per thousand, and that would then be voted on at the annual meeting.
But through like a bylaw or something like that, that would like set it up as a structural type of thing?
That is a question I would have to...
Research.
Search, yeah. I don't want to give you the wrong answer for sure.
Can you clarify, who, would that be, if, if the whole city was a Lake District? Does that mean that anyone in the city could vote for who would oversee the Lakes District if it were to? It wouldn't only have to be people who live around the lakes. It could be any?
No, it could be anyone within the city. So it could be anybody, they would get elected, and there's a, there's a process in that book too that said, states how people can, um, be elected, the chairperson, the, by the secretary. So no, it's, it's by election, and it could be someone on the lake, it could be someone across town.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of things I want to point out, and it was something I know Mike and I talked about. First one is by default, the council is the body. So if you create the Lake District, it's the council. And then I would have to look at Tim or someone else to correct me if I'm wrong. But as I understand, you can maintain yourselves in that position. You can call for an election, or you can just sit there and be in charge of, the, the council could be the Lakes District forever until such time. There was a petition which requires twenty percent at that time?
Twenty percent. So it takes a petition to, to change the board.
So I understand your concern, Greg. What I'm trying to say is if you created this thing, if, and live in that world for a minute, the council is the Lakes District Committee until such time that the petition would take place. So there's, I get it, there's risk. And the second thing I wanted to say, and I'll get out of the way. The one advantage I see to this thing over it existing solely within the city's purview is some of the same advantages that the CDA has. And that's in that, a lot of these projects, we would end up borrowing for this equipment. There's not another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of wiggle room in the general fund. So we would be borrowing, we'd be trying to add a staff maybe, we'd be, this... While we don't like the idea of an additional levy, this allows for that to happen without having to borrow. Those, that equipment, and I understand the concerns, I just wanted to make those two points and get them out there. And then I will, I saw that Steve, at least Steve has, he ended up and liked it too.
And you guys set the budget. So you guys set it, and then it's voted on by the annual meeting. So like I said, it could be the two fifty, it could be zero, it could be what, what it's set at.
It's not the board, it's the, the community.
So we said Steve had the hand up, and then?
I have a, sort of a hypothetical question. So if, if we approve...
So if we approve this and say in a hundred years, the city decides that the lake district is not being, is no longer functional. Say the board isn't working, or something isn't working. Is there a process to disband the lake district? Is it even possible? So if we create it, is it possible to uncreate it at a later date if it was non-functional?
We'll look into it. I don't know the answer off the top. Tim's taking notes. Jeff pointed out something I think is important, and we should probably clarify for the group. The budget is voted on at the annual meeting by all of the participants of the annual meeting, which would include citizens, like anyone who shows up to the meeting essentially. And so.
How many people show up to our finance meetings?
I understand.
Right? And that's my worry. I get the 20% after. I don't think if you went out and got petitions, you'd get 51%. I am worried if we give you the option to go and get 20%, it might be an option. I, I'm, I voted for all of our referendums. I would invest in the lakes if it was brought and we voted on it and the city wanted to do it. I would invest as much as I paid in additional taxes. I just don't like the idea of a smaller group of people doing this.
It's not a smaller group, it is the entire state. It's by no means the, the
Yep. Yep, okay. So we're going to open up for
Oh, I have a comment here yet.
We're going to go to public comment, and then we'll come back to that.
Okay.
So we'll come to public comment, because I know there's people that have a couple of things that they want to say, so.
I would request the council consider a referendum instead of a Lakes District. Seems a lot simpler to me to just say you exceed the levy limit by whatever, I think it was to propose 250,000 or whatever for these lake protection projects. And it keeps it a nice, simple, simple way. So I would request your consideration of a referendum as an option instead of a Lakes District. Thanks.
Jeff Knight, 405 Panther Court. So got a couple of things. If you go forward with the way you are, I question why you'd be meeting after all the students are gone. I think the problem I've got with this is the student's rent is going to be voted on when all of a sudden you do a major construction. And we've gone off our way to make sure the polling places are available to them. So you have to set a date if you are going to go that way. But I, I'm more concerned about, again, the lack of trust. I'm trying to figure out why this group of people that lives on the lake needs to create a new district citywide that they don't trust. The city will help take care of the lake like they did in the past. And from my perspective, the simple solution is you do a, you approve this with the property owners that are around the lake. And they go after small ticket items, they can go after grants. But if there's a big project, it would be really a lot better to have the bonding availability of the city. So that instead of your taxes going up significantly in year one, you could bond or be paid off over 20 years. I think it gives you, I personally, like Greg, what you were saying, I have a problem with my neighbors showing up at that meeting. You know how many meetings I come to, I don't want to go to another. I think I've elected the people here to represent me citywide. And I appreciate the fact that you've got a tough job. Now, where it gets the taxes, my rate over the last two referendums, and now with what happened on my assessment. I'm probably going to have the tax bill go up close to $600, maybe more next January when I get my bill, or December when I get my bill. If you add that number on to, that's another 100 at the low end. If you go on the top end, it takes a lot of people my age out of this community because they're living on a fixed income. Think we've got to go smart about this. I do think it would be wise to help them get this district. But I think it would be wise for the city to help them to fix the problem that I don't think the property owners created. I think it was the management of how we dredge the lake, and that was a city problem. So I'd like the idea going forward as a partnership. Let them create the district, they can tax themselves to fix the things they need on the lake. And they should be listened to when they come up with a big project that can be bonded on repairing the city, the lake for all of us.
Chuck Mills, 336 Lake. So the city's had this project for the last five, six years since it all went awry. Not this council, but the council. Making a bunch of bad decisions, and that's why we're in this mess to begin with. And it is my belief that, like, councils don't know nothing about a lake. But these folks back here, they know about a lake, right? You know what I'm saying? There is about a lake, just about, you've been looking into this, diving into it. They know about a lake. You, sir, asked us for your support on your ATV project, and we gave it to you. And it's worked out well. There were questions, safety, this and that, but we took a chance, and it's worked out well. You folks have no experience with this lake, and you got a lot to do. You got a lot on your plates with everything else that's going on around town. These people are willing to take this thing over. You won't have to deal with it anymore. They live there. This is their livelihood. They're not going to make the wrong decisions, at least not maliciously. So I think that, keep that in mind. And another thing, you can bail from it, you're done with it. Move on to something else. They'll take care of this, and they know what they're doing.
Jeff Hale, 599 South Franklin. I think there's a big disparity in what you guys are thinking about from the standpoint of the people on the lake being the district. We got together as a bunch of interested folks to try to make a difference in Whitewater. Just as a commission or a group of concerned citizens, looking for the answer to fix the problem that was created five or six years ago, pretty much by the city. It, what was created by the city turned into almost a floating bog for about 70% of the lake for a couple of years. And there's still a bunch of it out there right now. This board was put together just to look out for the betterment of those two bodies of water. Just because we live on those lakes doesn't mean we are going to be the lake district. This was just the board that got things started, did all the work for the last several months, and got the homework done, okay? So you got to get this out of your mind, that it's people living on the lake that are going to be the lake district. That could be a whole separate, different, I got a bunch of stuff on my plate, I don't need another board to sit on, okay? The other, I think the other misconception, I think I lost my train of thought. I'm going to go to a different subject. There was a commission that was hired by the city of Whitewater prior to the turn of this current last century. I think it was about 30, 35 years ago, maybe, that was brought in, paid big money, well-known outfit, to look at all the assets in Whitewater. They looked at everything, the university, the library, maybe, anything that might have been an asset to this community. And the number one thing that they said at the end of this assessment was the jewel in our community. The two jewels in our community, by exponential means, were Cravath and Tripp Lakes. If you look at Walworth County, there are, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, there are eight other lake management districts just in Walworth County. Almost every other viable community in Walworth County has a Lakes District, a state Lakes District. One of the things, one of the benefits of becoming a lake management district is that there are substantial state and federal grants that we can, we have applicable to us, that we can apply for, that would go against whatever that budget fund is, that would reduce that budget need on an annual basis. I was one of the original people that got the Whitewater Lakes Management District started, God, 50 years ago now. And if we didn't start that district on that lake back then, it would probably be nothing but a weed-covered monster that not too many people could enjoy for most of it. For most part, for the most part of the lake. I think there's a tremendous amount of pride in the community that you would have by restoring some of the damage that was done to both of these bodies of water. It's an asset that, that future generations are going to be able to enjoy for a long, long time if we take care of them. Powers Lake, Whitewater Rice Lake, Pleasant Lake, Lauderdale Lakes, Lake Beulah, Honey Lake, Booth Lake, and Comos are all lake management districts within the county of Walworth, just the county of Walworth. So, thank you.
Lori Katchel, you forgot the other data. Do you know how many of those other Walworth County lake districts are community-wide? Or are they just people on the lake?
No, they're pretty much multi-later, um, a lot of people.
Does Lauderdale Lake include the city of Elkhorn? And when you mentioned the 20%, if you wanted to bring a petition to remove the council from any power, that's 20% of how many people? What's the number?
City?
The entire city? 20% of 15,000? Yeah?
Give or take.
Okay. I was on Park and Rec when the whole issue on fixing the lake and dredging it was going, and as they started to go toward dredging the center. I said, this doesn't fix the problem, it made it worse. You're going to have to deal with the DNR. It's not completely, the DNR's fault, the city has a lot of liability on this too. If that money had been used to buy a weed cutter and paid for the staff to cut it, again, it would look a lot better. Wouldn't necessarily have cleaned up the quality of the lake that much. I know they're only asking for $25 per 100,000 value of property. But they have the ability as a lake association, correct me if I'm wrong, to go up to 250 per 100,000, 500 per 200, be 750 for a $300,000 home. I'm part of a group that has a property on that lake, would directly be benefited by it. I do have an issue when the entire city has to pay for the tax increase. Yes, lakes benefit the entire community. But the property owners alone are benefited the most. Their property value will go up. And I don't know how you do a bifurcated test. I know with Delavan Lake, I think it was just the owners around the lake, they're a much bigger lake, they have much bigger homes, you don't have enough homes here to do that. But it scares me when they have that much power and if they have the ability to remove the council. Other than the senior meeting, I counted up about 48 total visitors, so 25. And the senior was kind of seated because it was the topic and they're going to come to the meeting. I want to thank for all the work you've done, but it does, it scares a lot of taxpayers. And I think it's unfair, you know, when the city spends money on the library or spends money on the aquatic center. I don't think it increases the property value of anybody around those areas. And so that's a concern I have, and to have control of it, you are the elected body. They need to have, definitely have input on it. But it scares me, that number. I mean, I'm not even going to go on how much our taxes have gone up in the community, just on the city portion. It's huge. And it's, I just, we need to be very careful because it is 20% of the entire community, it's not 20% of the landowners. It's because I was reading all that where they get one vote, or if it's a different group that owns it, the two partnerships, so it would take 3,000,000, okay? Thank you.
So we'll turn it back then to council, Mike, I know you
Sure. I, I, at a high level, I'm really supportive of cleaning up the lakes and such. And I really appreciate the work that the Lakes Committee has done so far. I think, I think they've really, they've really got a good thing started. And a couple of points that were made, I do, I totally agree that the Lakes could really be a jewel for the city. We have the potential to really, that's a great opportunity. I think that, you know, we saw the two, where it was 26 cents per thousand versus $2.50 per thousand. And I think that, that's where I think the taxpayers need a little clarity. You know, if I was going to go to my boss at work and ask him for money, he would tell me, well, you know, he'd ask for where it's going to go. And I say this, meaning that maybe the city owns this task, I don't know, I'm not. But I would love to see like a one, three, five-year plan. What would it, what would it cost? And what would be the commitment, what would we get out of it? I think if we did that, and it was, and it turned out to be 26 cents on the thousand, or, you know, it would be the $78 on a $300,000 home. I think that, I think that the Lakes District can sell that. And I think that that's probably, that's kind of where I'm at on this. So, I hope that makes sense. I know there was mention of a referendum. If we were to do that, not saying, I'm not suggesting that we do. When would that referendum take place? Because I feel like we keep pushing this back, and I don't want to keep pushing it back until it's too late to address this concern. Does anyone?
A year from
April.
A month ago? Are there no more opportunities this year?
No, unless special, but I don't think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mike, excuse me.
No, I just want to kind of reiterate a lot of what Mike just said. I appreciate all the work you guys have done of creating the district, getting, I shouldn't say creating the district, creating the task force to get this moving. At the same time, it would be great if we had a, let's just say it's called a five-year plan. You know, this is what we want to do, this is how we're going to do it. These are the suggested costs for that, and what it would cost the taxpayer of the city. Something that we can take back to constituents that are asking, why do you want to raise our taxes? Why do you want to do this? So here's the plan. Do you want your lakes to look good again? This is what the, you know, this is what that group wants to do to make it better.
We are moving forward. That is what, Sewer PAC? That's the part of the plant plan that will be part of our comprehensive Lakes Plan. It's just going to take time.
So it would come from the city versus from the lake district?
Well, the Sewer PAC will be regardless, because we are committed to doing that, and we need that for grants, we need that for the lakes' benefits regardless of what happens. It's not going to be as detailed as perhaps that you're asking from. That would be a city task or a lake district task. But that plan that we are moving forward with, working towards, will lay out some of those goals that, because we did meet with Sewer PAC of what goals the Lakes Advisory Committee had come up with. The city goals of recreation use, fish stocking, ecological things. So that is moving forward, it's just with Sewer PAC, it's going to take a little bit of time.
Is there, is there like an opportunity cost? Or is there, I mean, how acceptable would it be to revisit this after the Sewer PAC report and knowing what the potential costs are?
That report, the final, final Lakes Comprehensive Plan will not be till 2027.
What about like a first draft or a preliminary?
I don't know that I, phase one was the aquatic plant management plan, and that was probably a year and a half in the making. So it's, they got a lot happening, and they work with a lot of communities, and so our scope of work had stated 2027.
Yeah, just one comment, because I think, I don't want to be mischaracterized here. I want our lakes to look beautiful. I've been on the council for a while now. When Jim Allen was up here, he would always say, that used to be a creek. It's gonna try to be a creek, forever. So in order to keep it looking like a lake, it's gonna take constant investment. I'm not a lake expert, but I've seen plenty of lakes drained and refilled and drained and refilled, it's something you gotta do every year or every other year to do it. We were told when we did the dredging, it could last from six months to ten years, so I just don't like the idea of whether it's a, a small group of people outside of the voting, the, up here where we're broadcast every frequent, right, all the same time, changing our levy without more process. I would love to see everyone vote in majority in the city to invest however much it is required to keep the lakes looking like it.
That's exactly what's gonna happen.
And we, we did, to be fair, we, we mailed out all of those for the education centers, they, they went to every resident in Whitewater, so the Lakes Advisory Committee had spent the, the effort, the money, and those went to everybody's mailboxes to give them the opportunities to come to five different sessions, and so sadly, that's the attendance that we had gotten.
Orin, did you have questions first?
Uh, you can do it.
Well, so, I was going to, before I even say the words, I was going to make something to suggest moving this to the next meeting on May twentieth, when Patrick will be here and will have all seven members to...
I've had that in my bag, I won't be for about a half hour. It's probably a good idea, he's not gonna like it, but it's a good idea.
Right. Or then I guess, so, the first week in June, I, for something this large, this scope, I think we need to have all seven members present to vote before we make a decision, just, I'll leave it at that, I won't say the rest of the words yet to make it official.
Orin. I have two questions, were mailers sent to students who live on campus within the city?
Every address we, we had, so we use the same mailer system that the police and fire did for the referendum, so I want to say this...
I have to look into it, I don't know the answer.
I believe it was fourteen thousand something addresses they had.
I can share that as someone who does live on campus, I didn't receive...
You did not receive, okay, a lot of them, I should count the number, I have probably two stacks, you know, that had come back as undeliverable.
Okay.
So I don't know why, I'd have to look in why they were undeliverable, so.
And then my other question was, would the Lakes District be subject to open meeting laws in the same way? Okay, thank you.
So I do want to note, too, thank you for the presentation tonight, I think the conversation was very important and good to have, and I think to kind of echo where Neil was at, I'm gonna make a motion at this point to table this to June third, once we have all seven council members here, because it is one of those topics that I feel should get the vote of the full council.
Okay.
So moved by Shannon, seconded by Neil.
Could I, uh...
Seconded by Neil?
Seconded by Neil.
Could I just address, the other major disparity and the conflict of misconception is that it is not that Lakes Committee that is gonna vote the budget, it is every single taxpayer in this community. It is not that Lakes Committee, you've gotta stop harping on that, because that is not what's going to happen, it's not gonna be that way. Every taxpayer has a vote.
Okay, so, we've closed public, we've closed public comment at this point, we've closed public comment at this point.
I don't, I didn't hear being closed.
We've moved past public comment at this point.
The other, the other point, excuse me, was that...
Hang the gavel.
You had two, you had two lakes...
We have stopped public comment.
We had two lakes before this disaster with the, the thing, that's the problem right now. It didn't fill in overnight, it filled in because of the drain down.
Okay. Heather, please call the roll.
Sayoun? Shannon?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Aye.
Tableauing passes to June third. All right. Ordinance is first reading, ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-fourteen, amending ordinance five-point-two-zero-point-zero-three-zero pertaining to enforcement of gaming machines PD.
We'll be brief.
Yes, this will be, this will be very brief. Currently, ordinance five-point-two-oh-oh-three-oh contains language that restricts gambling, games of chance, slot machines, or any devices of chance on any Class A or B licensed premise. Due to the fact that state law addresses this issue, the intent of the draft change is to allow state law to govern. So practically speaking, any enforcement of this issue would be coordinated with the Department of Revenue, agents within the Department of Revenue, and would be handled following pertinent state statute. So I guess just to recap, the, the reasoning for this is to clean up the language and to remove the potential for conflict between ordinance and state law.
Moved to approve ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-oh-dash-fourteen.
Second.
Moved by Hicks, seconded by Smith, Orin Smith. Any comments? All right, call the roll.
Public comment, no, okay. Hicks?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Aye.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye. Uh, ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-fifteen, ordinance amending two-point-six-two-point-oh-two-oh, Whitewater Transparency Enhancement to require Class One and Two hearing notices to be posted to city's social media page, finance.
We, we recommend approval, it's something that we were asked for and it's set up to go.
Move approval?
Second.
So moved by Orin Smith, seconded by Hicks.
And to clarify, it basically states, all public hearings, as required by ordinance and statute, will be posted to the social media channels, it will replicate the requirements of the given class notice and the timeliness of the newspaper insertions laid out in Chapter nine eighty-five.
Any public comment on that? Anything from council? Okay, I'm gonna call the roll.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
All right, passes. Ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-sixteen, ordinance amending two-point-seven-three-point-oh-one-oh, Lake Advisory Committee's membership to include one member of common council. So essentially put, giving the option for council to have a seat on the Lakes Committee, similar to most other committees minus the ones that have potential conflict of interest.
Move to table ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-oh-dash-sixteen until June third.
Second.
Moved by Hicks, seconded by Orin Smith. Any council comment or deliberation? Any public comment?
Point of information, are we tabling it to the next meeting when we're considering the Lake Council?
Yeah, they would be the same.
It would be two meetings from now, but yes.
Yes.
All right, call the roll.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-eleven, ordinance creating section two-point-six-two-point-oh-six-oh, public comment during common council committee meeting, finance.
So second reading, so this one was approved at the last meeting, it made some minor clarifications, go ahead.
I just want to add, I think we had asked for it in the last meeting, but page four-oh-seven, four-B-one, remove the word clapping.
Four-B-one. Hold on, yes, so make that in the motion, make that out in the motion and we will make that final...
All right, move to approve ordinance twenty-five, twenty-two-five-dash-oh-dash-eleven with a change of page four-oh-seven, four-B-one, remove the word clapping.
Second.
Moved by Hicks, seconded by Orin Smith with the amendment to remove the word clapping. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from public? All right, call the roll.
Hicks?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Aye.
Sayoun?
All right, moving into considerations, number thirty, discussion and possible action regarding the alcohol licensing committee hearing of appeal of Ethan Tashini for denial of beverage operator's license.
Do you want me to go? Okay. We had a meeting prior to this one, at five-thirty, Ethan showed up to appeal his denial to the beverage operator's license, the alcohol committee did decide to uphold the denial of the beverage operator's license, and now it comes to you guys, and Ethan had prior plans, so he is not here.
Motion to deny beverage operator license for Ethan DeConey?
Second.
Moved by Hicks, seconded by Orin Smith. Council, or, Michelle, you can call the roll.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action regarding start time of common council meetings from six-thirty to six.
Because nothing is easy, we have an ordinance, and so you have two options, either the manager and the president do it and the council votes on it, or you simply change the ordinance. I'm suggesting if this is something you want to do, you do both, because if you want to change the next meeting, you should probably do that by vote tonight, and long-term, we would change the ordinance. With that, I don't know that staff generally has a recommendation, I think most of them are in favor of starting earlier so we can get out earlier, but this is really up to the council.
I'm in favor of changing it to six.
I, I have a question. In the event when there is a, another committee meeting before the council meeting, will that affect the ability for that other committee to function?
I'm actually bringing that up thinking of alcohol licensing from tonight, even though we were in and out in twenty minutes, so it probably wouldn't.
That one's not set, it doesn't have a set time and date, that can be changed and moved any, anywhere that's needed.
Do we have any other regularly scheduled meetings on the first and third Tuesdays?
No.
So practically speaking, you would only interfere with something that's ad hoc and that could be rescheduled and adjusted.
So how would you suggest, we need to make a, make a motion to starting next meeting at six?
That's what I would do.
And then amend the ordinance?
And yes, something to derive, I don't think we have, did we have the, do we draft the ordinance? Can that be started?
We have, we have the ordinance.
Ah, do we, now, so I would have to defer to the attorney, we'd have to put that on there as a first reading then? Right? Yeah, so we'd have to bring it back as a first reading in the future.
But we can suggest starting at six for the next...
Yeah, if there's an ordinance, you can change, the council can change the time by vote, if you want to make a permanent change to the ordinance, so it's forever six PM, we gotta do that through a first and second reading.
Okay. I'll make a motion to change the start time for common council meetings from six-thirty to six PM and ask city staff to bring back a ordinance change to that effect.
Perfect.
Second.
So moved by Hicks, seconded by Mysak. Any public comment? Any other comments from council? Michelle, call the roll.
Heather?
Heather.
That's okay. Hicks?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Let me fully apologize for that, I need more coffee. Thirty-two, discussion and possible action regarding appointing a council member to WFD Inc.
It's that simple, we need one person. They meet generally, the next meeting's scheduled for June second. Nose goes?
Yeah.
I can do it.
If you want it, it's all yours.
I don't want you to say that, I'll do it.
Okay. So then is there a motion that needs to go for that?
Because it'll get added to your, your, that we can keep track of all the appointments.
So I would move Orin Smith to be appointed to WFD Inc.
Second.
Moved, or, moved by Shannon, seconded by Hicks. Any other discussion? All right, you can take a vote on that.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Stain.
Mysak?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
All right, council member order for round robin to, for B and C to ensure quorum city manager.
So we're removing Brian and Lisa, members one and seven, so that leaves two, three, four, five, and six. Want to see if we're adding any of the new council members, and then you need to figure out your order, so it can be as simple as deciding which, if any of the new two council members are on this list, and, or reorder them if you choose, give us that list, we'll move forward.
We'll stay at one minute for a start there.
So Neil, one.
Patrick would then be two?
Yeah. Patrick will go two. Yeah?
I'll go for seven.
If anyone's particularly pressed for time, I'll be able to move up in the coming year, so.
Is that a offer for three?
I can take three.
I'll take four.
Neil?
Five.
Five for Mysak. Go Mike Smith at six, and we'll go Sayoun at seven.
I guess that makes me say.
Just to clarify, it's, so, like you said, you, you'll be more available, as the concept, the concept was, so, like, if I'm number one in Parks Rec, because I'm on Parks Rec, whatever committee I get asked to serve on that thought is the next person that gets asked to be Patrick, so it's, it's gonna constantly keep on rolling?
Yes, I'm, just, this past year was very unlikely to be available at all.
Oh, sure.
But, and much more likely in the coming year.
I just want to make, like, it's gonna be starting at the top of the list every time.
All right, so one more time, give me the rundown real quick.
So Hicks at one, Singer at two, Orin Smith at three, Shannon at four, Mysak five, Mike Smith six, Sayoun seven. We need a motion, correct?
Yep.
A motion to approve in that order, the round robin.
I second.
So moved by Shannon, seconded by Mike Smith. Heather, call the roll.
Shannon?
Aye.
Sayoun?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Mike Smith?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Orin Smith?
Aye.
Discussion, possible action regarding upgrading audio/video equipment in the community room, media services.
We're still working on it.
Yeah.
Could you give us some time?
Sure, I, I just wanted to say that, just, the mics have been working great the last couple of meetings, I don't know that we need to change that, maybe just more of the screens were more information for the galley, going.
We've been working hard to dial in the mics, we will, we'll keep moving forward, I'm just gonna keep it on here, we will keep pushing it forward where we can, and we will discuss at the staff meeting, the focus on screens, which seems doable. Okay, thank you.
Discussion, possible action to approve sewer pack aquatic plant management plan for Kravith and Tripp Lakes, try saying that five times fast.
Yep, and then Michelle, she's got something, Dave's gonna speak, I do want to point out that it, it seems like there was a functional error in the way we listed this, and that this plan is solely for the Lakes Management Plan and will not be a part of the city's comprehensive plan. So I will let Michelle, and then Dave can speak, and you guys can decide what you want to do.
Okay, the only thing I have to add since I did the presentation, and there was no concern, I'm asking that you guys approve the plan, and then it will move forward to the DNR for their approval, and then it becomes part of the data that moves then forward with our Lakes Comprehensive Plan.
So to clarify that, it's not Lakes Comprehensive Plan, it's a Comprehensive Lakes Management Plan.
Word, word.
Which is different.
Dave Stone, three oh-three N Street, I'd just like to file an objection if this is labeled as a comprehensive plan or used as a future zoning decisions based on the, the plan itself, and, just because it never went before the Plane Commission, thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Mysak, seconded by Orin Smith. Any other public comment or any questions from council? Okay, Heather, you can call the roll.
Hicks?
Aye.
Mike Smith?
Aye.[1753.75]
Sayoun.
Aye.
Oren Smith.
Aye.
Mysak.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye. All right. Number 36, discussion and possible action regarding stop signs on Walworth Ave at the Prince Street intersection. We'll start with Brad.
Yep. So this was a request by councilperson to be brought back to the full council. Um, it had gone to the Public Works Committee back in July of 2023. Um, back then I did provide accident data. Uh, there were, worry of having accidents over the previous 10 years. Since then, uh, another, um, four accidents have occurred. Um, the majority of those accidents were people stopping and then pulling out, um, into the line of traffic, basically failing to yield right away. Um, not sure why they thought that the traffic on Walworth had a stop sign, but it's clearly marked on both approaches that, uh, cross traffic does not stop. Um, when looking at the request for stop signs, uh, we use the manual of uniform traffic control devices, um, to help guide us into making a decision. So it's not just willy nilly. Um, in this case, uh, you know, stop signs are not to be used to control speed. Um, if, if speed is an issue on Walworth Avenue, um, and basically going through the warrants, the intersection does not warrant a four-way stop. Um, we did have the fire department and police department also weigh in. Um, their recommendation also was to keep the intersection in its current configure, configuration, which was the recommendation from the public, Public Works Committee back in July of 2023. So that would be, still be our recommendation at this time is to leave the intersection as is.
Any com, public comment regarding this matter? Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carl Peterson. I live at 1016 West Walworth Avenue, which is a, one house away from that intersection. I was, uh, aware of that study that they did the traffic check. That was done in the slowest time of the year. It was done in late July, early August, rather than at a time when schools are in session, the university and such. And I think if that traffic study had been done at a time like in September, October, it would have been very different. I think that, uh, I was on the fire department for 28 years. I saw no, I see no problem with a fire, police going down that road. It's a wide road. And, uh, they can make it down other streets when there's traffic. They should be able to make it down Walworth Avenue, no problem. That needs to be a four-way stop. I've witnessed, uh, just this Tuesday, or the, this Monday, I mean, when I was coming out of my house to go for a walk, there was a car pulling out, tires screeched. There was no accident. Nobody was called. But there was an accident there like six weeks ago, uh, two car accident. I really think that it's, uh, needs to be a four-way stop. Uh, there's been more accidents at that intersection than there has been at Five Points or at Elizabeth and Walworth. Uh, so I really think that needs to be reconsidered. I think that traffic study needs to be redone at a more appropriate time, like September, October, or it's really too late this year in the spring. Uh, so that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to suggest, um, I also, I've used that intersection a number of times. Um, and it has been a close call a few times, um, mostly with my work truck. It's larger. Takes time to get the speed, but going back to just some of the stuff from last year where we are on the transportation committee with the school district, um, Prince Street. Obviously students go up and down that, that road and they will cross Walworth at that point. So, um, in general, I'm, I'm in favor of it. Um, I don't see it being a hazard at this point to make a stop sign, four-way stop.
Um, has anybody considered making that intersection a right turn only intersection? So that you could only do a right turn and not a left turn because, um, are most of the accidents, if you're making a left turn from that street, and then it wouldn't have to be a four-way stop. It would just be a, a right turn only.
It's interesting, but no, that's not what was looked into. Okay. So I see a couple of ideas. One is not being opposed. There was an idea to study it more. What do you guys want to do?
I'm going to move to place a stop sign on the corner of Wal, or make it a four-way stop at the, at Walworth and Prince intersection.
So just to be technical, you would be directing staff to draft an ordinance because it would have to go through that. You can't actually approve it tonight. You would, staff would be bringing, if we did this, staff would bring back an ordinance for a first and a possible waving or a second hearing.
Yes. So move to direct staff to draft appropriate ordinance for four-way stop at Walworth and Prince.
Are you open to an amendment?
Sure.
Can we also have that with a, uh, send it to Public Works to have a additional traffic study done during school year, September, October?
Well, again, the traffic study, it wasn't a traffic study. It was just a speed study.
Hmm.
And again, stop signs based on the manual, you know, form traffic control are not supposed to be used for speed. So if you're concerned about speed, that could be done at any point that the police department can put up their speed and just report back. I don't think that needs to be studied.
Sure. Okay. Um, withdraw.
You're withdrawing the amendment?
Yep.
So I've got a mo, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Shannon, seconded by Hicks. So then, okay.
I was just wondering if we could have an addendum. If we're doing a study, we should look at, we should direct the, them to look at alternative methods of traffic control at that intersection.
Any other?
Just to that comment, I, we can, I can bring it up to suggest it at, uh, DPW, next DPW meeting. Yeah. I'm on that committee as well. So I'll just, I can bring it up to start discussing at that level. Bring it back here if needed.
Sounds good.
Cause I do want to point out drafting of the ordinance does almost nothing, except for you'll have a drafted ordinance. It would still have to be discussed and we'd take public comment and you would vote on this twice. Uh, once at the first reading and again at the second reading. So this is just merely to get, get things moving.
Put an iron in the fire, if you will. Heather, you can call the roll.
Mike Smith.
Aye.
Oren Smith.
Aye.
Sayoun.
Aye.
Hicks.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Mysak.
Aye.
All right. 37, almost there. Discussion and possible action regarding adding stop sign at Peck Street and Witten Street intersection.
Yeah, this also was a request to be brought here, uh, by a councilperson. Um, uh, let's see. We looked at this, uh, Public Works back in 2017, the same request to add, uh, stop signs on, um, on Peck Street. Um, Witten Street does have stop signs. Uh, we updated trash, trash, crash, uh, data. Um, and in the last 10 years, there's only been three accidents. Um, again, uh, same, um, the speed is an issue. Stop signs aren't supposed to be used for speed control and the intersection does not need any warrants based on the manual of uniform traffic control devices. Uh, so the staff's recommendation would be what it was back in 2017, that the intersection stays the same.
Um, any public comment on this one? One of the things too, um, this is on the edge of my district. Um, I've had a number of, um, concerns raised to me in various forums about it specifically. Um, there is some change of traffic pattern exiting, um, Lincoln Elementary, um, that diverted traffic down Peck that wasn't originally going in that direction, uh, which is what warranted the request on my end for, um, the conversation. Any council questions? Um, I would move to, um, dra, have, direct staff to draft an ordinance for a four-way stop at Peck and Witten.
Second.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by Oren Smith. Heather, if you can call the roll.
Mysak.
No.
Sayoun.
No.
Oren Smith.
Aye.
Mike Smith.
Aye.
Hicks.
No.
Shannon.
Aye.
Three, three?
Three, three.
Do you want this up back on the next agenda when there's seven? Cause that's a thing we can do. Yeah. Said something that you guys want. Otherwise it stops.
We keep talking about it?
Tonight?
No.
I'm putting you on the Lakes Committee.
So again, if you had voted yes, this would be brought back as an ordinance for further consideration, just as a reminder.
I'd say that's largely why I'm in favor currently because we can continue to have discussions about it rather than just shutting it down.
Any one of the seven, you can ask for it to be a future agenda item for next month.
Okay. Uh, so council member requests for future agenda items. We'll start with Steve. Any future?
Can I pass right now?
Okay.
No.
I've got, uh, three of them. Can we get an ATV, UTV update for, uh, end of last year, early this year of any accidents, issues, concerns with it? Can we place the speed sign at, uh, Walworth and Prince intersection just for a couple of days of data? Uh, and lastly, can we get a spring splash update and, um, what are our future plans after we had the previous, uh, spring splash task force?
Um, and then Steve, just come back. Uh, and then I will be agreed just to say discussion and possible action regarding stop sign Peck and Witten Street. All right.
Okay. And then Neil, the speed, you wanted that at what essentially is item 36?
Right.
Okay.
Prince and Walworth.
Yep. Just making sure. Cause with your three items, I couldn't.
Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Moved by Neil, seconded by.
Second.
Oren Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stand adjourned at 9:04.